Welcome, everyone. We're going to go -- we have a topic that's not noted on the agenda that we're going to start with. And Tom, I'll let you get down.
Thank you. Great. The first person to be here at Public Memory is...
Yeah, I guess we didn't say we're going to do public to be heard.
No, yeah, I guess...
Is that technical?
Why don't you go ahead? I don't know if we consider public to be heard. Tom, give the background on the issue.
In our library, there are times when the myself and the staff choose to ban somebody because a code of conduct issue has been violated. We recently had an incident on Sunday of this week in which there was such an incident. And when I came to work on Monday, I saw the report and I spoke to the staff members in question, and I made a decision. This incident relates to a hate speech comment that was made. We have zero tolerance for hate speech. I made the decision to ban the patron in question. As you folks likely know, when we do decide to ban a patron, we give the patron the opportunity to come to a board meeting, to talk to the board, and the board will look at the matter and quite possibly consider it, refer it to a committee. And tonight, we have an incident where the patron that I banned is here, and she is invited to come and to speak, to address the board. Ms. Lalas, if you'd like, do want to give her...
Oh, yeah, sorry. Hello, good night, good evening. When I was growing up, we were always taught, you know, sticks, stones can break your bones, and names can never hurt you. So that's just, I never let names bother me. But on Sunday, I was on the elevator, and I was going to the third floor. Somebody got in, and they were only going to the second. And I just kind of went like this, and they said, "What's your problem?" I said, "Well, I'm going to the third floor, you're only going to the second." And he called me retarded. I said, "I'm not retarded, I'm going to the third floor, you're only going to the second." That could be lazy. He says, "You're lazy." Then, as the second floor came, he called me a bitch, and he called me something else, but I didn't hear it, and I called him a name. Yet, he was a black man, I'm a white woman, and a black security guy came up, he kicked me out, but not him. And I felt that was wrong. Either we both should have been kicked out, or we should have been given a warning, that's it.
So you called, I'm sorry, he called you something, you called him something?
He called me retarded first, then he called me lazy, and then he called me a bitch, and then he said something else, but I didn't quite hear it, and I called him a name. But back in my day, that name wasn't bad, but I guess today, it's bad.
Is that the hate speech?
Yes.
Yep.
And how long have you banned her?
Two years.
Two years?
Yes.
Which is the standard?
Standard, when someone uses hate language, we have zero tolerance. We have had to, very unfortunately, had to ban patrons who address either other patrons or staff with that sort of language. Our code of conduct is explicit, we do not allow that. So I made a decision. I'm never happy when I have to ban a patron, because our, why we are here is to allow everyone to use the library, to use it successfully and appropriately. In this instance, I didn't feel that was the case.
I'm always very present to staff. If I see something, I tell them, I always note to them, and they say, "Thank you." I mean, many times, I see things. So I never had a problem. I've been coming here less than 10 years on a regular basis, never had a problem.
No, you don't have, I will...
I never had a problem, just one time.
Ms. Lalas, we don't have a record, quote-unquote, "folder" with incidents. This was the first one. But it wasn't egregious, I felt, you know, it was...
I mean, I think two years is a lot. I mean, 30 days is fine, but I think two years is a long time.
It's language in the policy, and so it sounds like it's the policy that you were following, as opposed to a decision that you made on the fly.
Right.
You were going to say...
I think my concern, and I guess we haven't visited the decision before the recordings, that we are recording, so I'm feeling a little bit of discomfort kind of going through the line of questioning about some...
Agreed.
...lines, and it's something that's going to be shared. You know, agreeing with the policy and agreeing that you're the director and everything else, I guess I'm just feeling a little bit, and I don't know, I'm offering, I'm saying something without knowing the resolutions, but just sort of noting that if I were in her shoes, I might feel a little bit uncomfortable, even if we're asking questions about the matter, so I don't know if we have to revisit policy around having this type of discussion.
But that's a separate, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, but I'm just...
We could refer it to the committee to consider.
Yeah.
I agree.
Refer it to...
Yep, who are you going to refer to?
Policy.
It's personnel or policy? It's personnel or policy?
It's not personnel, it's not employee. It's policy about patrons, who is kind of, they're one each other. I would argue it.
Yes, yes, makes sense.
Refer to the policy committee?
Yeah.
So we'll refer this to the policy committee, which is a subcommittee of the board, and they'll meet and discuss, and we'll have Director Giaffino inform you once the policy committee has met and discussed. They may, they may have some questions that they'll want to ask you, and if they do, the director will reach out to you.
I'm just about to have this situation where we're not being recorded. I think for your benefit, for everyone's benefit, we'll have a better dialogue, in a more intimate, not sort of broadcasted sense.
Yes.
Sort of my recommendation.
But thank you for coming.
Yes, I appreciate that. You did, and your coming here triggers the ability to have the Congress, so I do appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, yes.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. We might want to keep that available for...
Are we going to go to... Well, I'll give, I'll give unfinished business. So downtown development update, I really don't have further update from last month's meeting. So, you know, the minutes that will approve later reflect sort of the discussion at the last meeting and meetings prior. On the vacant trustee position, we, there's, we have two positions open, as folks may remember. The first position, we had hoped to fill at this meeting. We've had some challenges connecting with one of the applicants, and she was originally on vacation, and then it's our challenge connecting with her. And so our, we're also collecting applications for the second board position, though that's a separate, you know, exercise that is underway as we speak. And we expect to fill both positions at the January board meeting. And when is the due date for the...
I believe it's Friday.
Friday, okay. So anybody that hasn't yet submitted an application and has interest, we encourage you to do so. We've gotten a number of applications in, which is...
Seven, six, I'm sorry.
Six, okay, great. So that is the... Yes, well, January is when we'll announce the new trustees. That's the unfinished business, and with that, we'll go to the public to be heard. Monique Evelard?
We'll do better next time.
Good evening, how are you this evening? Monique Evelard. Okay, this is a bit of a wordy, I'm reading a statement before I ask the question, so it's a bit wordy, so if you don't mind, I'm going to read it. Okay. Previously, in an attempt to remain neutral and independent from the developer, you determined that it was important in retaining services of HR&amp;A Advisors, Inc., for consultation and valuation of the library, that this be paid for by the library with its own funds, and that the library would not accept funds from RDXRX. On March 4th, 2016, then the library board president, Hanum Just Michael, told Loadhard Newspaper that the money to pay HR&amp;A will come from the library coffers, not from funds controlled by the city developer, RDXRR. On the decision not to allow the developer to pay for the valuation, Just Michael said the board felt strongly about this, we didn't want them to pay for it, we wanted to remain independent and independent-minded. So our question is, has this changed?
Yes, first, we did engage HR&amp;A with the library's money for, to advise us a number of months ago, but we are exploring, as we've discussed in previous meetings, and I'm not going to go through it, we are, you know, exploring a, an opportunity to potentially be provided with financial resources from RXR to pay for a consultant of our choosing to advise us on the matter further. So I think that's how I would answer the question. Any, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
So, why would you consider something like this now, just now?
I would argue it's not for now. I would argue it's, it wasn't a sudden or immediate decision. I think as we discussed the budget for May, and as you've made different decisions, sorry, I forgot.
Sorry.
I haven't had a decision on this board that's been made just suddenly. It's usually done after a significant deliberation and after weighing different issues. I can speak candidly to the budget that was just approved by the city in May, for example, was something that we made decisions in balance, and after a lot of thorough review of resources and needs and assessments. So I wouldn't say that this was a new change, I would say it would be something that was discussed over time at different meetings, over the two budget votes that I've been a part of, that decisions were made as to how the money would be used to serve the community versus paying for resources.
Okay, so, but what we decide, we would like, we expect you to stand by your decision, remain independent, and not to enter into contract with RXR. That's what we stand.
Duly noted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dan Miller?
Good evening. Again, I've got some notes and a question. This is to the issue of fiduciary responsibility that's been discussed here many times. At various meetings, we've heard the board and you as the trustees make reference to having a fiduciary responsibility to seek out this valuation and to explore this potential opportunity with, I guess now, it's RD now, I guess, RXR, sorry. You know that we reject the claim that this, in fact, represents a fiduciary responsibility. And as we've looked, we've been unable to find any legal authority that supports that you, in fact, have a fiduciary responsibility to look into a matter like this. When, as we look at this, we find the trustees are subject to certain legal obligations as board members. Those seem to be limited to care, loyalty, perhaps obedience to your mission, and have nothing to do with proposed transactions between the community institution and a private developer who's seeking profit in this. Our understanding is that you all have a fiduciary responsibility to the library's mission, which states only that the library, or states the library's to be, quote, "community resource that seeks to improve the life of every citizen in our city." Part and parcel of this mission is the stated role of the library in providing fair and equal access to information. From our perspective, the board will be held accountable to this commitment to the library, as well as to the community of New Rochelle, as laid out in the mission. And insofar as any decision by any board member negatively impacts the library or hinders its execution of the mission to act as a community resource, board members will be acting actually in violation of the stated purpose of your elected office. We feel that contracting with RXR could cause serious injury to the library's mission. In regard to fiduciary responsibility, seems that it would be irresponsible for the board to enter into any contract with them. And so I come to this question that I think was asked at our last meeting, and I have two questions. I think you were asked to share with us your definition of fiduciary responsibility, because we've heard the term a number of times, but never really heard what you mean by it and how you define it. So can you, can you share that with us now?
We are not going to go around and individually, our definitions of fiduciary responsibility. This is something that's defined by law, as you've sort of alluded to already. We did consult one of our attorneys and ask them to put together, sort of, you know, summarize the law of what the responsibility is, and we just got that this evening, right before this meeting. So I, given we got it just a few minutes ago, I'd prefer to, you know, share it at the next meeting, when everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. But, but, that's the answer.
Okay. So Chuck, then, am I hearing you that at the next meeting, we can expect that you will share...
Correct.
...your legal understanding of the term?
Correct.
Great. And then there's a question about the public record, because I think, again, there's been a notion of putting things in the public record, and we all appreciate that we're now being videotaped and streamed, et cetera, et cetera. What is put in the public record, and what's the process for doing that? Are these recordings put in, are there, you know, what goes into the public record?
So we also got an opinion from our attorney on that, in terms of the, what's documented in the written minutes, and we got a clear opinion on that, that it is not standard practice nor expected, that detailed minutes of what is stated in the public to be heard section be included in the, in the actual written minutes. That is not sort of standard, recommended, and what have you. And in terms of the videos of the meeting, I don't remember, I don't have the opinion in front of me, is that, does that become part of the public record? I would assume that it does, but...
Yes, Chuck, the broadcast of our meetings, starting from November till cessation, will be part of the public record, as will documents that have been shared at the meeting, as are letters that have been sent to the board by groups of members of the public and the responses. And they are kept, actually, each month, we have essentially an archival file of documentation that relates to each particular meeting. Those documents, that recording will be kept in that file. If a member of the public is so interested, they have access, as long as they make an appointment in advance, we'll give them access to what we have. Okay. So just, I want to make sure I understand, I think what I'm hearing is that the legal advice that you've gotten is that there is no requirement to keep detailed minutes or documentation of this interaction...
Correct.
...in the public record.
Correct.
And so I guess it comes to my question of, you know, I think my, in many of our experiences, this has been a really rich interaction that you all have engaged with us for some long period of time now, and I think has been really fruitful. I can't think of a reason, although it's not required, not to keep that in some record. And my question is, is there a reason that you wouldn't?
I think, I think to answer that, and I say this as an attorney that's involved with this in other settings, is because you'd need to have a stenographer. The video, the audio that we'll now have is the best indicia of that. When I seek the public record of the zoning board, the planning board, the minutes that are returned are really insufficient to get a sense of what went on, quite frankly, in terms of this back and forth, or in terms of people's comments. So unless there's a stenographer, what you end up with is someone's interpretation or summary of what you just said, which really wouldn't serve a benefit.
Okay. And just so I make sure I got it, so this video recording will be kept in the public record? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica, it took, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name.
Erica.
Sorry.
If you can, if you stand on the X, we will, you will be part of the public.
I'll be on, I'll be on, I'll be on TV. Hi, my name is Erica Itzkowitz, I live at 50 Poplar Place, right downtown here. And just to let you know that I am now losing my sky downtown here. I own a home here in New Rochelle, but I live down here, and I don't know who else lives downtown here, but I do. And I'm losing my sky, so I'll let you know that, from the 26-story building that's going up where the old movie theater used to be. So if you were to put a vote, put to a vote, a potential agreement with RXR, this would be a decision where there would be much pushback and controversy, and therefore potential for a very heated and conflictual environment. Please do not put us in this situation. Also, given that you are at a fork in the road with regards to RXR and the future of the library, and that you are now a board of only five, we think it is imperative that no major irreversible decisions, including any decisions regarding RXR, be made by the board until you have a full board of seven trustees who have been in service to the library and the community for a reasonable amount of time. There is no reason that any decision or vote, RERXR, would need to be made over the next several months. When appointed, your two new trustees will be on a steep learning curve in a very difficult and potentially contentious environment with many, many members of the community. Do not put them, yourselves, or us in this situation. Thank you, and I also appreciate it that you knelt for the pledge.
Thank you. Maxine Galub?
I just want to reiterate what Dan Miller already pointed out, which is, I feel strongly that it is not the library's fiduciary responsibility to enter into a contract with RXR, and that, in fact, I think it would be irresponsible of the library to enter into a contract of this nature, because it puts you in a compromised position, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Oliver?
Good evening, my name is Dorothy Oliver, I live at 162 Clinton Avenue here in New Rochelle. Can you hear, well, you...
I can hear.
Oh, you want me to look over here? No. Okay. My question has to do with transparency. I think it's very important, and I also think in this process that you're going through now with making appointments, with filling your, your staff here, I would like for you to, if you will, to explain how and when you would decide to actually make an appointment, which that answer was given earlier, when you said that there would be appointed in January. But please keep in mind that transparency is very important, and we appreciate now that your programs, your meetings now are being televised and going into public record. I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
Marjorie Sacks?
So, on that note of transparency, I wonder if, because we were expecting that somebody was going to be appointed at this meeting, I wonder if you could explain why you chose not to appoint somebody for this meeting, and also...
That's what I already said, in that we haven't been able to meet with all the candidates.
Okay.
Thank you.
And what, so are all of you, can you tell us what that process is, and how you, how you make a decision, you know, what do you base your decision for the appointees on?
I don't, we collect information on why people are interested in the position, we collect a resume, and we talk to the people to try to understand what they would bring to the board, and why they're interested, et cetera. It's, you know, it's, there's no more sort of mystery to it.
The only other thing is, they meet with at least three people.
Right.
And it's the same that it was for myself and you, dear, they meet with at least three.
Okay.
And frankly, we just, it's been hard to schedule.
It's been hard, people. I mean, November, I was out of town for work, and then it was Thanksgiving, and a couple of us had little people at home calling us mom.
And to be fair, we wanted to get in all the people who sent it for the first batch, so...
Right.
Coordinating, to get three plus coordinating candidates by the Thanksgiving, great, we had a little bit of a break.
We just did, then we have another vacancy, then he just happens, so everything was just like...
Right, no, I'm not trying to say, why didn't you do that, we're just, again, for transparency, because, you know, we just want to know what the criteria is for appointing, so there's at least three of the board members interview people, and then you discuss, and I guess who's ever, but what, can you explain what the criteria, like, how do you...
There's no stated criteria.
There's no stated criteria.
Okay.
We don't want to knock out anybody. That wouldn't really...
They might not hire me.
That's not how we, you know, function.
Okay. I just want to ask one other thing, because the last time we spoke about when Bernard Margolis was here for the, the public forum, and if there has been any update on New York State, he mentioned that there are New York State libraries who are approached by developers, and were just told no by the libraries, and I'm wondering if you have any more information about that?
No.
No? Okay. Can we expect that at some point?
What is your request? Tell me, tell us specifically, what are you asking us to do?
To find out which libraries in New York State have been approached by developers?
From, from him?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think he would know that. What he would know is what he shared, which was the libraries that have been involved in this kind of project.
Well, my question...
As he mentioned at the meeting, that there, there had been, that this would not be the first instance, and therefore, there are examples out there, and I think that's what you're looking for, and we'd all...
Right, examples of...
Like the dad, the research...
Right, of libraries who've been approached, who said no to developers. And he implied, and maybe Mr. Giaffino, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that they didn't get into any kind of discussions, it was just a no. So, okay.
I'm happy to reach out to Mr. Margolis and ask him if he could share anything he had about scenarios where libraries were approached by developers, and what happened, either successfully or not. I will reach out to him.
Okay.
And then, and when I get a response, I'll make sure it's available to our January meeting.
Okay.
Assuming I get a response, I would think I would, but one never knows.
Okay, and I'm going to, again, just urge you not to get into any contract with RXR.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there another person?
No, no, that's, that's, so, moving on to the regular...
Oh, yes. Okay.
Business, that's eight o'clock.
No, it's eight o'clock.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I haven't had a chance to look at them, I'm just... Did I declare that both positions would be filled at the January board meeting, or did I say that we would try to do it in December?
I was under the impression that you had indicated that positions, sorry, both positions would be filled in January. That's how I recall the, the conversation, that's how the notes seemed to indicate.
So, I actually think we said we probably, that's not what we said.
That we would try for the December meeting.
We said we would try for the December meeting.
For the one.
For the one, okay.
But we obviously didn't make that, but we said...
We didn't make that. We failed, but...
So I think it should indicate that we had hoped to fill one position.
And then the next minute, it could be our failure.
Yeah. Go ahead, a second.
All second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. In favor?
I wasn't here, so I couldn't...
Oh.
Right, that's weird, right?
Yeah, that seemed weird. Sorry. I need to call you out. So minutes are approved. Financial reports, is there anything?
Just, you have all the documents, we're doing well, as we are ready to complete the first half of the fiscal year. I do think it's worth noting, as noted... I do think it's worth noting, as noted by our administrative assistant, that we paid our New York State retirement invoice early, saved money, and the amount was $328,945. This is less than the budgeted amount, and apparently, according to the state of New York, the rates are continuing to be reduced, so we can expect in the next fiscal year in less of a contribution from the library, which is great for the community in terms of taxes. So that's good news. The other significant invoice that we did pay was our bond interest in principal, which was $102,625. It means that we are slightly less than 50%, but that's only because of the significant payouts now, but otherwise, we're in fairly good shape as we go forward.
That's great. That's fantastic. So, anything statistics related?
No, just busy, busy, busy times even, though the holiday season has begun, we're still being used.
I love the book, the tree book.
Yes.
Well, I think we can attribute that success to Amy Teets, our Friends co-president, and Sarah Papa, our social media coordinator, who created the tree for the first time last year, and this is year number two, it looks great.
Looks a lot better than last year. I didn't think that was possible.
Well, what's interesting is Amy Teets told me that since the beginning of the year, she has been collecting books with attractive spines that are not black. It was a mission, and they achieved 100% success.
I don't think we have a WLS report tonight.
We don't.
Dr. Gray.
Dr. Gray is absent.
President's report. I'm going to see to the director.
Thank you, and I have a very brief report. Just in terms of our grants, of course, we're still waiting on our theater HVAC. We're in the process of scheduling a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. I'm hoping that it will take place in the first week of January. At that meeting, we, the board, the committee will consider the, the bid for the work that will improve our HVAC. Tonight, I'm feeling very warm, which, which goes to indicate that we do have a problem here in the summertime, of course, you freeze, it's just a little wrong-headed, and this project will fix that. And of course, we have a grant from the state of New York that totals nearly $90,000 with a clock ticking, so we're hoping to make a decision in the near future. I'm happy to report, however, that our other grant that we received in August, that project is being closed out as we speak, and that is the replacement of windows at the Huguenot Children's Library. That work was completed in early December. It looks great, historically appropriate, and the staff tell me, as well as some patrons, it's not as windy as it used to be in the building, given the fact that the building was built in the late 1860s, and there was a renovation some years ago. This improvement was really much needed, and again, we were lucky enough to receive a grant from the state of New York that totaled almost $30,000. So that project is done. Happy to report that the Mary Smart Family Foundation provided us with a $10,000 grant that we just received. Those monies will be used towards the creation of a volunteer room in what once was the Friends bookstore, and so we're excited about that. We have a very talented group of custodians who have made their mark all over the building with great construction, sacrificing no, no quality, they're very good, and saving us a lot of money. One of their future projects in 2018 will be to work on that space. We'll have a room that will be available to our advocacy groups to use when they're working on projects, as well as volunteers, and possibly some other community opportunities, too. So, let's see, what else? Just wanted to thank the group of people and our advocacy organizations that came out for our Thanksgiving parade. We marched, we carried our banner, we had a beautiful float that highlighted all the great children's books in our library and others, and it was just a successful day, lots of people, particularly in the downtown area. So, it was a real, it was, it was a fun day, and the weather cooperated, which made it even better. In terms of our advocacy groups, our foundation will be meeting, its next board meeting will be January 22nd. Our Friends, its next board meeting will be January 10th. Our Friends book sales, the special monthly book sales will be January 4th, 5th, and 6th. Their most recent holiday book sale was very successful. Relative to the kind of work that the Friends do, you folks know, everyone knows that they have been existence for well over 20 years, they've given us over $1.2 million. We expect to see upwards of $60,000 for 2018. Most of that money will be used for programming, collection development. Also, we're going to be creating two study rooms, smaller study rooms on the second floor. They gave us the money, we have the labor, as I've told you, our talented custodians, so something that people are always asking, quiet study areas. In our current configuration, we can create two nice rooms in addition to the two that we have, so that's, that's exciting. And that's it.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Wait, the circulation desk?
Circulation desk grant is, we have received approval locally, both through the directors' committee, as well as the Westchester Library System Executive Board. Now we're waiting on the state level for the state library, as well as the dormitory authority, to approve. Usually, that approval arrives sometime in, in June, and our check will usually arrive sometime in August.
So when would it start? It's not going to start...
Oh, we don't think it will start, Deidre, good question. Probably in the latter part of 2018. What we'd like to do is to start, start the work in one of our more quiet times, which tends to be around this time of year, when people, you know, get busy with their holiday activities. And we're waiting on that $92,000 match. We're very hopeful that the foundation will assist us. We're also, as always, looking for other sources of grant money, revenue, et cetera. So, but that's, that's going to be a great, exciting project.
Yeah, no, I just, I've been looking at it since it was built, but I'm ready for it to be gone.
Our staff is too, and our patrons, yeah.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Do we have a personnel report?
We do, a very brief one. One of our staff members, her wonderful staff members, Enriqueta Zagroba, Ricky, otherwise known, she, she and her family moved to Florida, longtime New Rochelle resident. Her second career was here, her first career as a librarian at the United Nations. She sadly left, she was a great person, she worked in adult and children's services, so I am asking for a motion to accept her departure. She was an hourly librarian one, her salary was $24.94 per hour.
And if we refuse to, she has to come back?
I hope so, I think this is the hook that we can bring her back. She's, thank you.
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have just one final request. We have a library clerk, Lenore Bracamonte, who we hired as a hourly library assistant. So she is working both, she's bilingual, she's terrific, and she was sitting out at the information desk, um, as I walked down the stairs to go to this meeting. And she is, just was hired on the 7th of December, and her salary will be $22.76 per hour, so I would ask for a motion to accept her hiring.
Also move.
Is this the person we, is this the...
No, that's Maria Hernandez, who we, you voted on last month, and she's doing a great job, our new full-time hourly library assistant, bilingual library assistant in children's.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Budget committee, we have to schedule a meeting to start looking at the budget for next year. I think so, yes. So, we will discuss and get time on the calendar, I think after the holidays. Building and grounds committee, it sounds like you're working to schedule a meeting?
Working, we're hoping for the first week in January, and I was hoping I'd catch Quentin.
You're like a doodle.
I know, I am. It's all because of you, you turned me on to Doodle.
Oh, you did.
You do, I actually am going to ask you for that before you go.
We use Doodle, it's an online thing to figure out when everybody's available.
And we asked him to do one, and now every time I get an email, and there's a Doodle calendar.
It's much easier.
It's, it's, it's become an obsession, I have to admit, but it is much easier, it's instead of the countless emails going back and forth, people can just click on the dates that they can attend, and I'm a happy guy. So we are working towards this Buildings and Grounds meeting. As you folks know, we talked about the library theater HVAC project. One of our members of the CROCK, the capital repair...
Oversight.
Oversight, thank you, Greg, is Peter Nance, an architect, great guy. We're working on a potential proposal that would allow us to improve the exterior of the building, you know, not clean it, but...
Improve it.
Improve it, make it look nice and bright.
Not make it dirtier.
Not, and make it less dirty.
Less dirty.
Which is, is something that, I don't know, we've all aspired to, because...
And this has, this has been the challenge of doodling, in that, in that it's not just the grounds, Buildings and Grounds, it's CROCK, and, and, you know, a lot of things that we're trying to get accomplished, and I'm sure we'll see it in the January report back to...
And there's also a possibility of a geothermal grant that the state has put out, working with NYSERDA and NIPA, and it's just something that we'd like to explore, and we think the proper venue is with the experts. So, the Buildings and Grounds and CROCK members, I've sent all the information about it, it would be sort of an interesting opportunity.
Especially if we're deciding an HVAC. You know, if you're going to do the distribution, we want to make sure that...
That all the points are...
We're not creating an imped.
Right, so that's Buildings and Grounds.
Great. I think we kind of covered community relations. Any, is there anything else you wanted to make?
No.
Finance, treasury, and audit. So, I saw, Tom, folks that have been at these meetings will remember, we've had this ongoing issue with the school district in terms of reaching sort of a written agreement that documents sort of their responsibilities with respect to executing financings on our behalf, debt financings. And I think we thought we were done, and then we weren't, and so now, I think our attorneys, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but sort of back, going back and forth with their attorney...
Yep.
To hopefully, it sounds like we're, I mean, I'm not going to read the update, but it sounds like we're making progress.
We're, I think we're nearly there, there are just a couple of issues that need to be settled. Our attorney spoke with the school district's attorney, I think as recently as today, and we're hoping that at long last, we can come to an agreement that's acceptable to all of us, you know, one must think the law is...
Consistent with what the law says.
Yes, yes, most definitely.
So we don't have any issues when we go to finance ourselves. Thank you. And then, the other issue we had was sort of the, I think, the financing, the balance of the HVAC, right, via, because we have certain monies left under our debt authorization, correct? Looking at you, Greg, if I go wrong here. And then we have certain, do we have grant monies for that?
We do, we have state grade nearly $90,000.
To finance it, we've got some money left on an outstanding debt authorization, we've got grant financing, and then we needed to come up with some additional money to fund the balance, and so we've been looking at our fund balance, which is sort of like a dollar amount of money that we haven't spent from prior year budgets. We wanted to make sure that if we dipped into that fund balance to finance the, the remaining piece that we don't currently have debt financing for, funding for, that it wasn't going to, that our, that our, our fund balance would still sort of be at an acceptable level relative to our annual budget, which is sort of how these things are looked at, and so our attorney hopefully kind of gave us some, you know, guidance of, it's not, it's not written in the law somewhere, but different, you know, opinions have been given at different times, and so we, we wanted to make sure we didn't sort of like dip dangerously low, and I think, I don't, I'm not sure if, I think we've come to a decision, I don't know if we need to pass a resolution or anything, but we've come to a decision that based on what we know now, assuming nothing else comes up, and the fact that we're trending on budget, you know, halfway through the year, that we think we can finance the, the remaining balance via the, via use of the fund balance and still, you know, maintain at, at an acceptable level. At the, at the lower range of the acceptable level, but, you know...
And that way, we have a cooler building in the winter and a warmer auditorium in the summer.
And we're not leaving, the, the other issue is, we would leave grant money on the table. If we didn't find a way to kind of get this done, we'd leave that grant money on the table, which could impact future ability to get grants, et cetera, so...
Good.
Yeah, that's good.
You guys did a lot, thank you.
Personnel committee, over to you.
Is there a resolution for, I mean, did we get one together or no?
You know...
There's not one in here. Is that the last thing?
I think that was the last thing, and I think the, the resolution would be...
Can I say what I, I can say what I emailed you guys, but we, the personnel committee met, we had an issue over survivor's benefits, and with the library, which never has, would we pay for the benefits of a spouse...
Medical benefits?
The medical benefits, health benefits, of a spouse of an employee, once that spouse is no longer with us.
Once the employee's?
Once this, I'm sorry, once the employee passes. Once the employee dies. And so we, we thought about it, we looked at it, and again, there was nothing, we have no policy for this at all, what is called, I guess, survivor's benefit. So, we met and we talked, we actually had Jean do this wonderful Excel spreadsheet to show us the costs, what it would cost us, the library, to pay for the benefits of a spouse, once the employee passes. And these are only retirees, and she kind of, we looked at what the cost would be now, if one, if we're talking about one person, and we have about six people on the horizon, and what the cost would be once those six people on the horizon were to retire. And then we also looked at what other libraries provide, and so after doing all this, we...
I want to be clear on what the last piece you just said, this was a thorough analysis, this wasn't looking at just like one library, this was, this was sort of all the libraries in the area.
So we looked at all the libraries in the area, we looked at city libraries, we looked at all the libraries, I have a list of about 12 libraries here. And again, we looked at the cost to the, to the library over time, not just the cost today. And again, these are retirees, and so, the library, the personnel committee recommends, and I guess we'll have to put this in resolution form, is that right?
Yes, yes, we'll make sure it gets minutes, and also in a, in a document.
I'm doing it now. Okay. The library allowed the surviving spouse of the library employee to continue on the life, library health plan after the employee dies. So, that's pretty self-explanatory. If you work for us and you retire, your spouse is allowed, once you die, to stay on our plan. The library will not be able to pay the premiums for that plan for the surviving spouse. The cost of this benefit is simply prohibitive. The committee looked at the cost to the library and included the potential library retirees on the horizon, and as we looked at the numbers, it was simply cost prohibitive. And I would say, I went into this exercise thinking, oh, we can afford it, we can pay everything, and then I came out of it after looking at all the numbers, saying, it just, over time, we could not afford it. But what we can do for the spouse is make sure that they don't have to go out and look for a whole plan for themselves, that we would allow them to stay on our plan. Okay?
And that does have a cost, but a much smaller cost.
That still has a cost.
An administrative cost with keeping the person on, that the library is responsible for, so there is a small cost that can compound, but comparing it to the totality of the expenses, it was just, I mean, it was off-sided, it was pretty clear.
It's also worth noting that when we surveyed our peer libraries and other libraries, there, there was not a public library that actually paid for the surviving spouse's health benefits. It was a scenario where either the spouse was cut off, essentially, or the library allowed the surviving spouse to cover 100% of the, the cost of the premium, which is what the personnel committee is recommending.
Yep, so that's my recommendation for that.
So do you want to make a motion to make that effective?
So, I'd like to make a motion to do exactly what I said in number one and two. You want to read it again?
No, no, I think we have it.
Okay.
I think we have it.
Okay, I make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, I know that there's a big project, and thank you, Jean, for all your work.
Jean, and really, Jean, thank you.
Pulling this together.
Yeah, I mean, we sat for a long time, and you really pulled together all the numbers and made it like, you paid 50%, I mean, thank you so much, very appreciative. That's my big, that's all I have, and I know there's... That's my big, that's all I have, and I know there's other issues that I'm addressing, and I will address those.
Good, wonderful.
Thank you.
Is there anything from the Policy Committee?
No, but we have new homework.
Oh, go ahead.
No, we're just, also, we're waiting for 2018 to schedule a meeting, and we do have some policies and some documents that need to be examined.
Just doodled.
You just doodled, but yes, okay, I don't have to beg.
Nope.
All right. Among the policies, well, first of all, is our library bylaws, and our library bylaws have not been reviewed for a number of years, so I was able to obtain copies of bylaws, I'll be sharing with the Policy Committee. We also have some updates to our museum pass policy. We look, we are looking to create a library tutoring policy. We're, in receipt of a foundation grant, we will be bringing onboard laptop kiosk in our teen area, so we have a policy for that, which we truly need. So there are a few documents that, that the Policy Committee will be looking at, and will make changes, amendments, whatever it chooses, and then it'll be brought back to the board as a whole for approval.
Sounds like the Policy Committee is going to be busy.
Yeah.
And the Special Projects Committee?
Me, Tom knocked that out.
First item.
We've taken that off the listing, Tom?
Yep.
And John, and.
And John, and Daniel, and we're happy to have Laura here, and we're moving forward. We're actually on the cusp of putting out to bid equipment that's ours, as opposed to loaners, and.
With the grant money that we're seeing.
With the grant, with the grant money, and once that, once we get the best price on it, we'll be purchasing it with that grant money. We'll be setting the, this room up so that we can have more than one camera, there'll be two cameras with one as a backup, which is really exciting. And we'll have some degree of mobility, portability too, so we can work on that.
Great with the shows and.
That's right, we have to get permission from the performers, but Barbara Davis has been involved, and we're considering that matter, it would be terrific to do that. We also have had a series of conversations with Iona College, and they are looking to work with us in terms of providing some labor to work on this as well, and also working with them to provide us some assistance in our digital media lab. You know, young people are very much up on that, and so, so it's good. So we're really moving forward.
So they'll work with the patrons, like they'll work with the teens?
With, work with the teens, college kids with teens, it seems like a natural, you know.
That's great, it's generational.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it will work for our benefit, our kids, as well as the college students too as well, and so we're very excited about that.
Is there any Rockwell?
Yeah, actually.
Oh, yes, there is.
We have.
What was the goal we set for ourselves to get it back?
Yeah, and we're going to get it back on January 31st.
There you go.
And where are we putting it?
We are putting it back where it started, which is the children's library and the space where it was. We did, pending the decision of the board, I was really excited, and Barbara Davis too, we were excited to start moving, and so now we're in a situation where we have downgraded our insurance to reflect the real value of the, of the painting. The monies that we are, the monies that we're saving, we're using towards the purchase of a surveillance system through our vendor, so they'll start.
Is this going to be the kind where the like, the rays come in and you.
I can't tell you, Deidre, this is broadcast, we can't give away that secret.
Oh, right, now Z, that's.
No, it'll be Tom at his home saying, what are you doing there?
We have many ninjas waiting to pounce if somebody gets a bad idea. So actually, the week of the 8th of January, our vendor, Tyco, will be in and start the process of setting up the infrastructure. The painting will be delivered back on Wednesday, January 31st. We'll install, once the library closes after 6:00 PM. Our vendor, Tyco, will come back to work with the firm that we've hired to hang it, so that everything will be set, so this painting will be back and it will be protected from day one.
Well done.
Yeah, we've got it done.
And how is the public advised of this in light of the security? I mean, is it, is it a matter that there'll be a formal event?
Well, I'm glad you asked that, because the next thing that we're working on, and Barbara has, Barbara hasn't been able to put into place, as she characterized in an email, lots of moving parts, but what we're hoping to do, coincidentally, on February 2nd, is birthday of Norman Rockwell. So the timing is really good. We're hoping to have a program to talk about Rockwell, and Barbara's working on bringing back some of Norman Rockwell's most favorite models, New Rochelle residents.
Oh.
Isn't that, it's really sort of an interesting connection, a real personal connection to Norman Rockwell. So I can't, this is being broadcast, so I'm, you know, maybe I'm speaking.
People?
People, young, young, young people.
Images.
Young people, he painted.
Yes.
No, he means the images of all these young.
No.
But the actual.
They're living.
They're not young.
They're not.
They're not as young as they were.
But that's so cute.
Okay.
So this is, I think the personal connection, I said to Barbara, I said, what a brilliant idea, I just thought it was so, you know, it's great to have a lecture about this wonderful paint, this artist, but it's.
We have the, we have the author a couple of years back that spoke to this, and, yeah, it's, this brings together so many parts of New Rochelle and history.
So I would, I would just say to you and Barbara, as you do this, think about how New Rochelle has changed. So if we do something like this, I think it's great, but if there could be a piece, however, that reflects somehow how it's changed, because that picture is very different, it's wonderful, but it's very different than what we have today. And I would want to make sure that anything we do really speaks to who we are today as well, particularly in these times.
In these times.
Well, and my recollection is, based on that author, that there was a lot more diversity of models in Rockwell's work than we all were led to believe.
I seem to recall Little Rock too, was really one of those iconic paintings.
And that might be a way to do it, you could talk about Little Rock and what that's meant, but definitely be cognizant of what we're, what we're portraying.
I'm just hoping I'm not speaking out of turn and Barbara will kill me tomorrow, but we're working towards that. So, so it's really exciting, we'll bring that.
That's exciting.
No matter what, we'll bring that painting back.
Yes.
Thanks to all of you for supporting that decision.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, wow.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.